Good evening, members, and good evening, members of the public. Decided to come and watch this town motion, Missy, this evening. I'm standing in for the current chair, councillor Crittenden. And she's running a bit late, so she will take over from me when she arrives. So moving on swiftly, can I just ask you to turn your mobile phones off or to silent? Have any interruptions? So apologies, item one, apologies. I've got apologies from Karina Huxley and Anne-Marie Nixey. Is there any other apologies at all? No? Okay, thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Either any declarations of interest on the items on the agenda list this evening? That silence would say no. Item three is minutes. And this is to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the town promotion committee, held on the tenth of April, 2024, and as a true record. So can I have a proposal for the minutes, please? Councillor Moore, thank you. Is there a second for that? Councillor Ara, thank you. All in favour, please show. Thank you very much. Those against? Those abstaining, thank you. That's carried. Item four, town promotion update, is to receive an update from Mrs Rebecca Smith, Town Centre and Tourism Manager, on current activities to promote the town. Rebecca, over to you.
Thank you. And so I hope you've all received the report. And just a brief overview, because I know there were a few pages of updates. And we started doing this against the town promotion budget to make it easier for people to keep up to date. And so one of the things that we've been working on is the open spaces, open public spaces meeting, working group, which had, open public spaces strategy group, rather, which is now called the Town Enhancement Working Group, so it can include other working groups that we have, including the litter forum and the town beautification strategy. So that's something that we haven't met yet, but that's, terms of reference, I believe, have been
That's to be done at this meeting, yeah.
To be done at this meeting, yeah. Thank you. The pocket parks, we're still waiting on the licenses agreement from TDC Estates, which Laura and the Chair are in discussions with the Estates Manager about. We've been, we're still continuing with the networking lunches for our volunteer gardeners. The last one had around thirty-five people. And we'll be doing one again in September with a guest speaker. And possibly looking to give them an early Christmas present. I don't want to give them away at the meeting. They might be listening. Facelift Thursday, as you know, is an initiative where the technicians will look at different areas, quite a lot of them reported by the councillors through their residents, and try to keep some of the issues around bill posters and graffiti, et cetera, and fly tipping, all of those things, they try and tackle and get reported or removed. And there has been, because of the decorative lights project in the town centre, they have had less ability to carry that out, but they are still doing that as and when they can. You've probably all seen the harbour bar and its restoration, which has been done under the Historic High Street funding, which was the last of the big tranche of funding. And looks very lovely. And you may remember they had about eleven flagpoles, which they finally donated to us to distribute to the upper high street businesses, who were very keen to have them, and they're going to be installed so that when people come down the High Street or down Chatham Street, they're greeted with lots of colourful flags. And so that's a project that we're sort of working on as well at the moment. And bench chains, still a work in progress. Again, we, this is, we're working with TDC Minor Works on this. But also the technicians, again, because of the lighting project, which is taking up a lot of their scheduled works. They also want to restore all the wood, all the timber on each bench, which involves sanding and oiling. And but so when they go back, when they are installed, they're looking rather stunning with their new brightly coloured ends and the restored wood as well. First lot's been done, so that once they can go in, and we're hoping to get them in in the next few weeks, then we can remove the next six or seven and get them painted and sandblasted and powder coated. Abbots Hill is the new artwork we're doing. This is all part of the wave finding and street art project that the town council has part-funded. And this is, this particular bit's being done with a grant that the town team received from Historic England. They've received the wood now to, and they've got their designs, so that's going to be installed on Abbots Hill panels. So that will be really good and add to all our street art that's going on. I've just had last night the final part of the licence come through from Network Rail as well, which is for our subway art, so that's looking like that's going to happen imminently. Yeah, I'm hoping to get them to paint it all first, which was part of the original agreement.
Clean it, that's good.
Yeah, yes. I don't want to go through everything, because it will take some time, but we've got our new leaflets. The trail is being reprinted, but that was done with a grant, and they haven't asked for that, any extra funding for that. And it will be all within that grant funding that we've received. And there was an issue with legibility when it went on, when it went through the printer. The digital prints were fine, but unfortunately the lithograph prints were not. But they've happily rectified that for us. Also, at the station, we're going to be having the decals, so that when people come out of the station, they can see immediately what bus stop to get. And that's now been approved by Stagecoach. And when I was talking to Stagecoach, I mentioned this idea of sharing bus stops. So it's part of, it was part of the safer streets initiative we looked into a couple of years ago, that was sort of put to one side, because there are issues around enforcing and licence taxes. But the idea being, you have two bus stops that are very well lit, and between twelve-thirty and six AM, they're not used by the buses. And when I was talking to Stagecoach, they actually mentioned that they do this in Ashford, and they've also done it in Canterbury. So I've started the conversation again, and Chief Inspector Swallow contacted me this morning, actually, to say, yeah, let's look at this and find out a bit more. But the idea being that people can move from the clubs directly to a taxi and safely out of town without hopefully getting involved in any any, and putting themselves in danger, basically, yeah. Simon's obviously going to do that active round gate in a little while. And events, as you all know, D-Day tomorrow, so councillor Orban will be starting the events off first thing in the morning at oh eight hundred hours. He would be outside at the custom house. Really, that is the national time that towns and cities are doing the proclamation. And we wanted to do it then for people before school or work, if they wanted to attend, because the flag raising, again, at the national time is at nine AM, when councillor Orban will do a second reading of the proclamation. Starting with the O耶 and the bell, which I won't ring. The tunnels, walk, talk and supper event is fully booked. But people can get down from about quarter to nine, and there's going to be a bagpipe medley in honour of the bravery on the beaches on D-Day. And then that will be followed by nine fifteen beacon lighting, which is going to happen opposite the tunnels. And then our mayor, councillor Pat Moore, will read the tribute, which is a poem thanking and remembering all of those that were involved in World War Two. And we did, I did manage to find a veteran, who's a ninety-eight, ninety-nine-year-old gentleman called Mr Impe, but he doesn't feel well enough to attend any of the events. I have bought him a, one of the official pin badges, which I'm going to give to him in the next few days. If there are any other veterans, I did buy three, so if anyone knows of anyone else, or if we see anyone on tomorrow, then we do have a couple of spares. What else? So other than a couple of items on the High Street, so we've got the market starting next Friday on the fourteenth. I've been working closely with Ricky from Bray Market, and they've had a lot of interest, and they're currently just sifting through to make sure that there's a nice, good mix of different stalls, and not any, trying to have as little repetition in the stalls as possible. And I've also been working with Andrew Dockrell from TDC. And today, the posters have been ordered. And they have included our logo on all of the promotional literature because of the support the town council have given in trying to get the market up and running. And we will also be physically helping with some marshaling whilst everything is being put in place.
Can I just interrupt you there? And just the ways that I spoke with Andrew Dockrell yesterday, because I was concerned about the access. As you know, we have that, people, deliveries, arboretum and everything, that at early hours. And it needs to be closed, continually closed. I've asked him, sorted out, I asked Andrew if he'd sorted out the road closures, and he answered, he's no. And which I said, I said he wasn't acceptable. However, I think we've got to roll with it, and then see how we go over the first couple. I'm going to come down on the first day, first day of the market. Now, I can see whether there's any issues or anything with it. But they're fully aware of what the situation is, and Andrew will be down there himself on that day. So fingers crossed that it all goes, it all goes well. And I did ask them out whether they would give, again, would give the stallholders free parking. And they are going to put them in Staffordshire Street, as you probably already know. But I just thought that, I'd say that I have spoken with them, so backing you up, because your name come up about twenty-five times. But, yeah, you know, so
Well, what we're keen to do is make sure that this happens with as little hitches
Yes, indeed, indeed.
Particularly for the other traders in town that are always there. So that's why we're going to be having marshals. But myself and technicians will be there to advise and escort people that need to deliver to their shops that day. I think the retailers in town are as keen as we are to see the market return, so I think they'll, they'll work with us and, and
But they don't want any issues. They want their market to run well and whatever. Thank you for that. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought it was a good time to say that.
The last couple of bits I wanted to mention is the new heritage harbour status, which many of you know. We have now gained heritage harbour status, and we have a heritage beach harbour working group. I think there's a couple of members that are on that group here. And they want to try and make some celebration around that for the heritage open days, which are in the first and second week of September. We've also done an audit of all the signage around the harbour, which is kind of cluttered and not necessarily very useful. So we wanted to look at maybe having some sort of uniform signage that makes it easier for our visitors to navigate and points of interest with a little bit more information around that. So the two recommendations that I would like members to consider are around the signage, so, and one of the war memorials in the harbour. I have to say, you know, I've lived here eighteen years, and I hadn't really noticed it, because it has got very tarnished. It was, the memorial was laid by Dangia Elin in the year 2000, so it's only twenty-four years old. But it has, it's lost a lot of its features because of the tarnishing. So the patinas not really helps show it. So and of course, next year is the eightieth anniversary of Operation Dynamo. So we're keen to look at, perhaps we could get some quotes to restore it. And with councillor President's help, we found some photos of how it looked about six years after it was laid, so it still had the two, the two definite defining colours to the, to the actual stone or plaque. And so what we would be looking to do is get that professionally restored, so that it was the signage for the heritage harbour, to complement the heritage harbour status, and to look about getting some quotes that I can report back to an appropriate meeting. And there are some photos that show it, which hopefully digitally show that a little bit clearer. Just wanted to say that I'm very aware, sorry. I'm quite aware that Estates are doing a survey of valley-wide monuments and memorials. But I'm not convinced that that survey and funding will be done in time for a guarantee that this particular memorial would be able to be restored in time for next year's celebrations. So we were wanting to restore it from our TDC's point of view. So just for those that are also on TDC and know about the restoration that we're hoping that TDC are going to be doing, it's a valley-wide project. I just think we need to take this one forward and just take it off of them and do the responsibility. I presume we need their permission, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to add my support to what Rebecca's just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Members, any comments or questions or?
I think there was a memorial fund from government. Didn't they come along and clean up some of these? They do St George's. They do St George's.
What, the government?
Yeah, there's a government body, I don't know what it's called, but they do clean up St George's.
There's a war memorial fund and possibly grants available. So we're looking at council shop, yes.
Thank you for that. Members, if there's no other comments, then the report is asking you just to note, recommendations, to note the information about the tomorrow's event. And also, members are asked to note the report pending a capital spend, everything that relates into the Christmas lights, et cetera, et cetera. And I would just like to thank Rebecca.
Chair, I think you've got a couple of things at the end of your agreement.
I'm just looking, I've just looked at the, I've just looked at the recommendation.
Things to report for agreement?
Oh, beg your pardon. Thank you for that. You're asked to consider approving the town centre and tourism manager seeking quotes for the restoration of the Operation Dynamo monument, and then report back to town plant and town promotion committee. And members are also asked to consider approving the town centre and tourism manager seeking quotes. A new sign is to support heritage and harbour initiatives, and then to be brought back to the town plant and town promotion committee. So I put both of those together, and I propose that we accept those. Could I have a second, then? Councillor Crittenden, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Any gains? Any abstentions? No? Thank you. So that concludes item five, and I'm pleased to announce that our Chair has turned up from the wilderness, and she's ready to take over, so if it was public, just apologies for this, and
My apologies for my late arrival. My phone was disabled and not able to be used, so I couldn't even ring ahead to say that I was running late. But thank you to councillor Orban for stepping in and carrying on. So thank you. Agenda item?
Six.
Five, you said, we've just done five. No, it's next, isn't it? Yeah, you're trying to set me up to be confused there, councillor Orban. So very easily, we are now on item five, and I'm going to hand it over to Dean.
Thank you. So in 2022, we set up a budget to work with TDC, and Rebecca and I have been working with the Fannet Tourism Department, look at creating creative experiences in Ramsgate. So that's such things as public art trails, workshops, and journalism as well, and art experiences within Ramsgate. Match funds, what we put into it. You've got the report in the pack that you've been sent detailing its success. So last year was stage one, and we're looking to continue that into stage two, which is the way to create the experiences to push them out after its success as well into the wider audiences. TDC Tourism Team are creating a draft plan for this year's campaign. That'll come back to the next meeting. We're currently in talks with them of what we wish to see. I don't know if Rebecca wants to add any more for that.
No, I'm just, currently, actually, just before the meeting, just a message about one of the creative journalists that's coming down imminently and what she wants to do. So there's only certain, certain things you can get complimentary. So, you know, we're supporting those projects, so that when the journalists come, they have a really good overall experience and do the things they want to do. So we're working, as I say, very closely with the workshop creators as well within our town to make sure that these, the journalists that come get a very broad experience. So, yeah, it's totally ongoing, the work we're doing with Julie and her team. It's been brilliant, actually. It's been really good. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, so the recommendation is just simply to receive a note, the report. So any other, any question, any other questions, sir?
No.
Okay, in that case, item six, I hand over to Simon.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to give a verbal update for one of the reasons Rebecca mentioned. It's mainly about Active Ramsgate Week, which was running last week. I was sort of in the midst of running that, and I submitted the report. Also, there are no new recommendations for approval at this point. This is ongoing work streams. So just to give an update on Active Ramsgate, we have just got a few images on the screen to show and walk you through. And this was our advertising for it that went out ahead to garner some interest. And the week was really designed to start focusing on our new themes. It was rationalised with Active Ramsgate at large, so walking, cycling, exploring, and wellbeing and water sports. We also added a few more as well to extend it across the week and to try out some other things as well. Dean, if you can move us. And this was the timetable that we ran through. As you can see, it was quite busy. It was eight days of different activities. Like I say, we tried to sort of focus on different themes throughout. And those first five days are our real core themes. But we also added to that Kids and Family Day to extend the reach of some of those activities, as well as a new item of the Challenge Day, and a wind down of a rickshaw ride, which was a sort of novelty to try out for this year. It was quite a packed week. This is the first one we've really had since the pandemic, I believe. And the last one we had was really bad, so the Act of Eight, so there were eight experiences. We packed in fifteen activities here, so we sort of doubled the volume and tried to remake it a feature for the year and for Active Ramsgate going forward. Despite the weather, which was not in our favour most of the time, every single activity went ahead, bar the first one, ironically, which wasn't rained off, but was actually due to high winds, because canoeing, sea kayaking has very, very low thresholds for that because of the extra work it means, the danger it poses for the efforts to be put in by amateurs. But, yeah, the rest of it, we actually managed to run every session, and by and large, were all very well attended. I just wanted to show you a few images of the activities as we went through the week, just to prove that we actually did some of these things, that they did happen. In no particular order, that's one of the new bike tours we've got on the left. This is with Coles Kem Bike Tours, which is, we've now secured them running a fanning loop cycle experience that runs out of Ramsgate, starts in Ramsgate with Ramsgate Street, takes us to Ramsgate side, and comes back to Ramsgate. And that ties in with hire, with one of our local hire shops, as well as bringing them back around, obviously, where they can then get dinner or engage with our other businesses. The boat tour, we ran, you know, we know there's three boat operators, but one that jumped jumped at the opportunity of going to sea, and that was really, it was in such high demand. And it was a really exciting experience, and I think it's taught us quite a lot, actually, about using that more in our promotion. Beach yoga was a sort of new addition, part of our wellbeing strand. This is something we've been looking at for a while. A lot of the yoga practitioners and places are more kind of indoor, but we found a practitioner who's really keen to do some beach yoga, and we think that's a good way to bring people in. As a very novel experience that you can't do everywhere. Similarly, just to extend on the kids and family side, we also tried kids yoga, which went down storm, really, really popular, and really enjoyable, really engaged children. We are taking water sports and kiting and winging down a bit in our priorities, but we did still run we did still run a kite and wing taster session for younger generations. It was incredibly popular and a really good session actually as a family session. A lot of these sports are typically for adults, for safety reasons and also just cost reasons, but just doing these tastes of trying the wings and the kites went down really well. Nor is it walking there, as said by Denise, she's really growing this, this activity in the area. She is really, really sort of cementing her, her offer in Ramsgate and we featured her in Active Ramsgate Week now well, but also she, she also featured in Big Weekend and was very oversubscribed. That's, that's also going well and it adds to our, really adds to our walking offer, I think, as a sort of, as a different experience to rather than go alone walking experience. We also did a separate session promoting harbour bikes and bike hire, particularly on our peer-to-peer cycle route and offered free bike hire for limited numbers, but we gave, provided guides to do the peer-to-peer route as well, which is a great way to promote harbour bikes, but also to promote that route, which is one of our key routes. The nature walk around Pegwell, that's run by Keith Ross, which we've promoted before, but we're trying to bring more into the core of our offering. That was, that and also the Seashore Safari, you see next to it, was the day the heavens absolutely opened and soaked everyone involved from head to toe. But I can tell you, it was one of the most popular and most well-fed back activities throughout the whole week despite the terrible weather. Similarly, the Seashore Safari, we've worked a lot with Thanet Coast Projects to bring back their Seashore Safari and beach hunt activities to Ramsgate. They had sort of slowly moved away from Ramsgate for reasons I won't go into, but we've managed to sort of bring them back. And again, even on that day, we had a Seashore Safari and a beach hunt. Again, that literally the Seashore Safari started, it was almost hurricane and yet families still came and the kids really still, you know, the harder kids that were there loved it. So that, that went well. Great. So that was just a flavour of some of the activities. We actually still have one to run, which is the sea kayaking, which will, has been rescheduled for this Sunday. So we are almost complete. Just a few key stats to round up. We'll be putting together more of an analysis than this, but as, as mentioned, so there's eight full days of activities. In total, there's 15 activities on offer. We offered them out, all spaces on these activities in a sort of lottery fashion and we had over 200 people applying for those spaces. So it had a good reach and interest. And early analysis in this, without going into more, which we will be, I'll come to, but we know we had our customer across the range of places we are trying to reach. So yes, Thanet and the locale, but across Kent, people from Canterbury and elsewhere and others from London too, that had seen, seen the advertising online and had joined some of these activities. But there will be more, more of an analysis. And one thing I didn't put on there as well is we had a really great range in terms of demographics as well. I don't have hard evidence on some of this yet, but I can certainly tell you that we had probably the youngest participant was a, was a baby really and kids yoga, it must have been 18 months to, to some of the more senior participants in perhaps some of the walking activities, I would say at least going into late 60s. So a really good spread in that, in, I said more senior to, to an 18 month year old.
I think careful.
But I'll come on to. But yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you the, the upper limit. But just, yeah, just a few, few numbers to sort of give you a flavour there. And also just moving on, oh, sorry, just also say, yeah, again, we'll have more analysis on this, but a lot of our advertising was digital through our own channels and communities and beyond. And we have seen quite an uplift on just, this is just showing the reach, but this shows vis a vis like the last period at the same time. And as you can see, our main channels are Facebook and Instagram and our reach has gone up by 200%, over 200% on Facebook and over 150% on Instagram. It's also translated to, to an increase in followers quite significantly as well, which is, which is a good sign because obviously the more followers we attract and can harness, the better for future promotions. But there'll be more analysis on this as well to come. And this is also just a smattering of some of the feedback we've had and I should say totally unsolicited, what we will be doing, not just part of the week, but as ongoing, now this week has gone out and some of our other promotion will be hitting in earnest. Strand two of our market research will be going out now, now the activities have sort of got going again, we will be reaching out to solicit more feedback directly. But this is, this is just unsolicited feedback that came to us off the back of the week and it has been 100% positive. We've not had any negative feedback. That's not to say there isn't any, we just haven't seen it, but no one's reported anything to us and by and large it's, it's gone down very well, as you can see from some of the examples there. All of this I'll put into a much fuller report for the working group. So you will be, that will be shared amongst councillors here as well. But if there's any other questions at this point, I'm open to them.
Councillor Orban?
Yeah. Should we expand our digital business? I think obviously TikTok's not been mentioned and I just thought it would be good if the Chair of Town Promotion Committee could actually take part in all of those events and then you could TikTokerize it through that. And then I'm sure that would attract more people. Chair, what do you put?
I could save you here if you like.
Either another, I wasn't able, I wasn't able to join any of those. Do you have any particular events in mind councillor Orban?
All of them for you, Chair.
Would you like to join me on them councillor Orban?
I'd love to go out on a boat, yeah.
I'd love to go out on the boats. I think it's a bit late for this year.
Quite, quite luckily actually, obviously we couldn't have possibly anticipated this. We ran this this week to be ahead of the season for lots of reasons. One, to generate activity and people taking on those activities now ahead of the main season and also to generate promotional material. So off the back of this, we've got a lot of new imagery that can help illustrate our activities and also what you've not seen here yet, because it's still in production, is a lot of videography that can help illustrate not just the wider offering as whole, but individual activities. But we did that in May for a good reason. Obviously, we didn't know the election was going to be called and it's just as well, we weren't featuring any councillors because that would have fallen foul of some of the perde rules. So that's one good reason why we didn't have councillor Crittendon fronting TikTok. But also we are sort of focusing first and foremost on Facebook and Instagram to reach our audiences and that is, that is very much backed by our initial research. That is how we, that is currently where we reach our audiences. That's not to say we shouldn't, in my mind, expand to TikTok and things like that, but I think we're also at a point where this was great in generating a lot of material that now we can start promoting because in, in this first year that I've had really, we've had a real dearth of, of fresh material because there hasn't been activity or there hasn't been that to collect it. So we're in a good place for that now.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you. Yeah, it went really, really well. I actually joined councillor Orban on kiting.
Good.
Yeah, I was there, wasn't I?
Very good job.
I had a practice before.
You have to admit, I can say that.
I just wanted to know that, so these people who attended the all the events, were they like local or from the district or like all over the country because they are on the digital media? So are they like, did we get, attract any visitors?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to be really granular on this. I would say that the majority would be local and Thanet based and I'd like to see that expand next year. Like I say, I do know that people from across Kent and our catchment area and from London by self-reporting, but we don't have yet a, a, like we don't, we didn't have a mechanism to record every single one, just because it was very difficult to do that. Some of the research and follow-up might help give some more detail on that, but that to me is a real learning for next year. In, in, in trying to just get it all moving quite quickly this year, there's, it was quite a manual process. What I'd really like to do is institute a far better booking process for next year, especially with all the busy as it was.
Maybe from survey, you know, stick the box, you know.
Yeah, so, so when you're, when you're booking in, you're giving in that data as well.
Like the destination, that would be a good, good way to, you know.
Indeed, indeed. Some of our capture was really focused on contact details for follow-up on this one. So one of the, one of the things we've been doing in, not just to this, but in other things as well, is really trying to build up our newsletter database. So this has added, you know, 200 people to that. But yeah, hopefully the research following will also tease it, some more out of that. Like I say, just some people self-reporting. I think, I think the majority are local this year and want to expand it, but there were people across Kent and there were visitors.
Because it's a half term, isn't it? So if it's like promoted in advance, people from everywhere can see that, you know, Ramsgate will be catering these things, so we can go to Ramsgate and.
And in my mind, I mean, you've got that 30, 70 split of Active Ramsgate being 30% to, you know, engage the local community and 70% outwards. And in my mind, this almost answers that 30% for this year and then what it generates in promotional material and ongoing will feed the other 70%. It's kind of how I see it for this year, but I would like to expand its reach and know that we've expanded that reach next year.
Yeah. Before I bring councillor Green in, I'd just add, I think there is an element of the timing. So we know that some of the Active Ramsgate projects later in the year are going to be aimed at schools and that's going to be a part of our reach to the local community. But this early in the season, this is, this is more likely, I would have thought, to attract the, the local Thanet ones. But it was good to see on, on the screen that there were some London and some Kent, wider Kent responses. But yeah, I'm not overly surprised if it is a bit heavy laden on, on Thanet and Ramsgate responses, but that's because of the time of year.
And I think it also just a possibility of getting it going again and next year we'll have much more in place. And one of the big things about the whole exercise was actually just getting familiar and operational again with a lot of the supplies have changed since, you know, we did a lot of these activities and getting them on board. Now we're kind of in that flow, we'll have a much better lead-in for next year to do that.
Councillor Green?
Yeah. Did I say that you had about 200 participants?
Yes. Applying to say yes, because, because we use a sort of lottery system, we ask people to say, if you're interested, contact us and we'll put you on in the prize draw as it were. So we had 200 people sort of saying, yes, I'd like to join that activity.
What would, what would have your capacity have been?
In terms of total spaces, I would have to go and top that up and come back to you. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. They, I mean, each act, most of the activities were relatively small so that we could have a lot and showcase a lot of different things because also that's literally what those activities are. You know, you are limited, for example, on a canoeing trip to a maximum of eight people or, you know, others where we could, it's a, it's a one person thing. We tried to have a session through the afternoon. So take the kite and wing examples, sort of run for an afternoon.
Specifically, one of the ideas of holding it in May is that people would continue doing these activities the season.
Yeah.
Have you?
Sorry.
Are you collecting evidence of that? Have you got evidence of that?
Well, again, two things there. Some, some of that is self-reporting. So these, these are real short soundbites from some of the feedback we've had and solicited, but a lot of them actually did say, again, thank you so much for this. I will be doing this again in the future. I will be coming back to this. I will be inviting my family. That, that came up more surprisingly frequently than I was expecting. Again, our follow-up research will help tease out some of that further down the line. One of the key things will be about how much retention we've got or returning have we got to these activities.
Would you continue doing it in May?
That's a really good question. I think there's a lot of pros to it because it, it does sort of set us up for the season and as I say, with a lot of the promotional material it generates. And it, the activity itself is promotional. So I think that's a really strong reason to do it in May. It was very variable weather-wise. That's, I think that's the biggest counter to it. And previously, I know there are active eight weeks will run in like September and I think the, the reasoning for that being, well, that extends the season and you're more likely to have better weather. So I think there's, I think there's pros and cons. I've not sort of come down on either side yet. I think there's some more thinking to do about it, but I'm open to other, other suggestions and input really. I'd also like to hear from the operators, what they think, whether they think it's better to do it now rather than later because it helps kickstart things for them. And there was a lot of these as well that were quite new this year, so better to start earlier. So for example, the kayaking that is, is not entirely new to the area, but it is new, restarting. The yoga being an example, something new. Even the, even the kite and the wing surfing, because of challenges with licensing and things there, I think they were, they were quite happy that it was earlier rather than later to help give them some business and some promotion. But I haven't formally gathered all that feedback from them, but I will be doing that. But yeah, any, 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 any opinion you have on that is, I'm very open to.
What would you do in addition if you had the funding?
I definitely think, yeah, more capacity would be, would be one, to try and do more. I don't know if this is more about funding as much as time, but possibly funding because we pretty much hit the budget on this exactly. We put 4K to this and we're pretty much on, you know, slightly over, but we're, we're still well within our Active Ramsgate budget at large. If we did have more money, one idea we'd had and discussed, which was partly budget but partly time, was sort of having a super ticket or super tickets for a few people, maybe a family, maybe a few families to come for the whole week, do every activity or opt-in for the week, stay in a hotel, maybe have dinners in a few places so that it really ties it into other businesses as well and staying through the week and making it another great promotion. So I think that would be a really easy one to add on for the money. The other thing, I mean, the other thing with more money, it would just be more promotion, paid promotion, which we didn't use any of. Pretty much the entire budget for this was used on securing the activities so that we had a real array of running it, which is of course pouring straight into the local economy of those businesses. And, and some, and the only other money is really on videography and trying to capture some of that. So, so yeah, the other one would be more investment in the promotion, paid digital, paid print and potentially journalists as well.
Okay, I'm about to bring councillor Ara back in, but I just was going to say, one of the idea, one from my point of view, one of the concepts about having it in May was it was almost like a relaunch of Active Ramsgate because with the changeover from the external contractors to having our own in-house management of it, there was a period where we were just pedaling slowly. And so this was really about a, a much bigger kickstart and that's, obviously we can look at alternative times of the year, but that was a real part of, of having it in May. Councillor Ara?
Yeah, I was going to say that if we do have more funding, I always wanted the rickshaw ride. I think if the council could just bring a few rickshires, you know, and have it and. I think if the council could just bring a few rickshaws, you know, and have it, and within the active Ramsgate week, we can provide that ride.
Oh, you're picking me up.
I would, I would love to do that. Yeah, I think that's something maybe, I think we can look into, isn't it? That would be something so unique for the Ramsgate.
If you don't mind, we'll move on in the, in the agenda, because certainly I think any ideas that, you know, you want to come up with, please feed them back through to Simon. I think that would be, you've made me think of tuck-tucks as well, so maybe we could test them. It's not exactly an activity, but, so also, I'm very aware that, you know, Simon's a little bit on the spot here, because this is only just finished and we've still very much got a lot of work to do, bringing the evidence together to, to give a proper feedback. So if you don't mind, I'm going to now move on. I don't think there are any decisions or anything else to add.
It was, it was no, it was just really sort of feeding back, because it's fresh off the back of it.
And I think the other thing is coming with active Ramsgate is obviously what happens next, but I, again, I think that's something that we'll work out through the working group, if you don't mind. So the next one is the Open Spaces Group, and it's really just to note the minutes from the previous meeting, the strategy group, actually a strategy group, not a working group. Can I have a poser for that? Second deck, so it's councillor Orban and councillor Moore. And then with the working groups, I think this is something Dean and I are going to end up doing a little bit of a double act on, but I'm going to hand over to Dean first to, to kick off item eight, please.
Okay, so as protocol, as per terms of reference, we have four working groups to start the new council year. The last council year, we had two working groups, that was active Ramsgate Working Group and the Open Public Spaces Strategy Group. What we're proposing this year is to keep the active Ramsgate Working Group, and there will be a new Town Enhancement Working Group to replace the Open Public Spaces Strategy Group, as the strategy group was meant to be for a limited time. So start with the active Ramsgate Working Group. As you've heard from Simon's update, there's lots of stuff going on still. That group meets to discuss the ideas going forward and reports back to the Town Promotion Committee. There's been only one change in the terms of reference, and that's to change the number of elected members from two to three, purely because it was officer-heavy and it just balances it out, having three officers and three councillors on there. As I say, all decisions or any ideas do come back to Town Promotion to be decided on anyway. So the recommendation there is to approve, there's five there, to approve the terms of reference to that group, to agree a chair, a vice chair, the membership and the dates set out in the report.
Right, is everyone happy with the terms of reference for the working group? So are you okay to propose that councillor Orban? And any seconders, councillor Ara? The other thing I think we need to do with this is we actually need to confirm who the three elected members are.
Yeah, so if you want to go through.
So.
Chair, vice chair, membership.
There it is, right. So we've done the first part. To agree a chair for the active Ramsgate Working Group, I think normally it has been the Chair of Town Promotion, I would quite like to continue that. Anyone?
I propose.
Okay, and councillor Ara? I'll come back to voting on it. And the Vice Chair for the active Ramsgate Working Group has been councillor Huxley. I think, I believe she's happy to continue with that, if anyone is.
I'll propose it.
And councillor Ara again. I will say that you do have to be a member of the, one of the members of the Town Promotion Committee in order to be on the working groups, I just add that. But I, there is a third councillor, is there anyone who are members? So the only person who's not here is councillor Nixie. But are any of the other members of the working, of the Town Promotion Committee like to be on the active Ramsgate Working Group? This is an extra one from previous years. If not, we'll carry a vacancy, but if there are any volunteers, councillor Avenden, thank you.
Just a bonus, I hope I did, wouldn't be right.
Sure.
And so councillor Avenden, everyone, so is everyone agreed? It's me for chair, councillor Huxley, Vice Chair, councillor Avenden as the third councillor member. I'll propose that, any seconders, councillor Moore, and everyone agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And to agree the dates for the active Ramsgate Working Group, which are on the front here? They have been set so that, we got a little bit out of sync, we were having the active Ramsgate Working Group like two weeks after Town Promotion, whereas we, I think we're trying now so that we've scheduled it so that the, the working groups are in advance of the Town Promotion Committee, so we've got a much more up-to-date. So that's what those dates are, is everyone agreed? Okay, thank you. And so the second part is the, to consider and approve the draft Town Enhancement Working Group Terms of Reference. And we did have some discussions over the title of this group, and it got battered around quite a lot. So unless anyone's got any better ideas, this is the best that we came up with, that fitted all of the various criteria it needed to fit. What I will say is, Dean has already touched on this, this is actually, so a couple of years ago, we set up the Open Public Spaces Strategy Group, which was to set into place some, a way of working with our volunteer gardeners in particular, so that we could look at how we were supporting them as a council, how our technicians are supporting them, to encourage them. And I think we have quite successfully moved on in that. I'm looking at Rebecca and she's not looking back at me. That, that has, that has been working very well. And so this is, a lot of it is about helping to facilitate them engaging with each other and other ways in, in which we support them physically and practically. The other part of the strategy group was about really pushing forward on what had been the technician's suggestion about what was being called pocket parks, where we would take, as our technicians would take, greater responsibility for looking after some very specific areas. And there were some practicalities that needed to be dealt with. That has moved a lot less speedily and has had some limited success. However, I think we have achieved as much as we can in getting there. It is pretty much there, but it, it's been a bit more of a struggle. However, in effect, the, the strategy group was, when it was set up, was always intended to be time-limited, and I think as much as possible it has achieved what it was intended to achieve. However, out of that is proposed the Town Enhancement Working Group. So it's really a follow-on, so it's actually to continue to support the aims of the original strategy group, which is about supporting the technicians in the work they're doing. But I'm also hoping that out of it, as the Town Promotion Committee, we will actually have a better idea of just what our technicians do for the Town Promotion part of Ramsgate Town Council's role, because it's something that I've struggled with, is, is kind of knowing, I know what they do, but some of it, how much of it comes under Town Promotion, how much of it is other stuff. And it's proposed only to meet twice a year, because I certainly don't want to take up any more of our technicians' time in attending it than, than we need to. And the, the twice a year are seasonal, so it's, it's the spring and the autumn. And that's partly about supporting Rebecca with the volunteer groups, because they meet in, in the spring and the autumn. But also that's when the roles and, and the work that is doing is, is changing as we meet the, the changing needs of the seasons. So that's the background introduction to what is written at the beginning, which is the, the general section and the terms of reference on there. I saw a little frown on councillor Green's face, but does anyone else have any questions? Well, it wasn't a frown, it was, it was, it was a twitch of the eyes, I, I spotted. Councillor Avenden first though, because he's just put his hand up first.
Yeah, just a small thing, yeah, this is included, the Montefiore Woodlands.
Rebecca, what do we do with Montefiore Woodlands?
It, it is one of our areas anyways, these were additional areas that would complement the work that the volunteers do. So the pocket parks were things like the East Promenade, there's an area in Broad Street, there's.
Preston.
So it's, it's those types of areas. Montefiore Woodland is always on the range after the technicians, along with quite a few other areas.
Volunteer, I'd say.
Yeah, they work closely with the, the, the SUE and.
Lee's. So, so what the, the, this particular working group will do is, rather than changing anything that's already happening, is it will just simply acknowledge it. So it will be, this is what's being covered, and that will come under an acknowledgement of what they're doing, I think. So, and, and we heard Rebecca earlier talking a lot about the technician's time has been taken up with preparing for the lighting and things like that. So it's just really about us having a, a better understanding, and so it will just tick that box. So councillor Green, did you have a question? Sorry, I drew attention to your.
It's probably my ignorance, I had the impression that the pocket parks was, was, that there were real problems in expanding the number.
Yes.
And partly in working with TDC to achieve that.
I, I.
I think we should.
We're not, we're not dodging it, I'm just, it, it's just, the problem has been that we started off by looking for SLAs, and we were getting absolutely nowhere looking at SLAs. What then happened was Broadstairs Town Council actually suddenly moved something rather rapidly forward, which is in the same line of what we were trying to do, but they did it under a licence. And so that is the way we've shifted it, so that it's actually, rather than looking at SLAs, because clearly the SLAs were never going to happen, we realised that actually we would be better off looking through licences. And that's something that councillor Orban and the town clerk have followed up and will continue to follow up. But rather than the strategy group, which was really just waiting on TDC now, and, and the negotiations between the town clerk and the TDC and the chair, it, it, the strategy group wasn't achieving any more. So the strategy group has got as far as we could, and it was now in the hands of councillor Orban and the town clerk. And I think councillor Orban's looking like he might want to actually add to that.
I, I just wanted to say that the catch-up with the town clerk on Tuesday, and it's one of the things that we discussed, and the town clerk is actively moving that forward. The problem at TDC at the moment is that the estates, where this is the licence that have come from, they're under extreme pressure at the moment, lots of things, renewing rents and everything like that. So, yes. And, and the other thing I was going to say, Chair, is that you referred to SLAs, and I'm not sure if any of our members are the public watching.
Service, service level, you're quite right. And as I said it, I went, mm, service level agreement, so that is just a, like a contract to do it, whereas a licence.
If I may come back, just, just to say, I have also talked to Andrea Plant, the Head of Service for Estates, she's fully aware of the, what we're trying to achieve. And again, as I said, I've talked to her in pretty straight terms, I suppose, in a very nice way, of course. And to progress it as much, as quick as we can, as quick as they can, and she was very conscious of the fact that how long we've been trying to achieve it, so it's fair enough to say.
Councillor Green?
I think our technicians are doing it anyway.
They are.
To a large extent. And without an agreement, I'm concerned, but from an insurance point of view at least, it's a problem. So I do think, as we've got the cabinet member here, we do need to.
Totally agree with you, and that's why we're still pushing. And it will still be covered under this working group, so it's not being dropped or forgotten or ignored, it's still going to come under this as, as the new working group. Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Kate said, it's very important that you get the right documentation so that our staff are covered. Feeling a massive health for safety.
I think, I need to check with Rebecca here, but we, our staff were doing the work at the Viaduct, but KCC took that contract back. We did have a service level agreement, I believe, with KCC, have I remembered that correctly?
I, I don't know if it was the Viaduct, I think it was a different area.
Could have been Romley Gardens.
It could be. There's, there's certainly been, there's certainly been one or two areas where we have been working under, under agreement with KCC, and KCC as part of their economising, because obviously of their budget situation, have taken those contracts back. Councillor Orban?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just as Dean, about Romley Gardens, we opened a different moment, councillor Hudson dealing with that issue, he's supporting Hudson on it. The problem being is that the area is, in my opinion, is too large for our technicians to deal with, and they shouldn't be dealing with it, this Kent County Council needs to put pressure, and councillor Shonk was aware of it anyway. So councillor Shonk is going to be putting his final hand in to KCC, so I should have come out, because there are issues about signage and everything that's, that's there. So councillor Hudson is dealing with that.
Councillor Shonk?
There's a lot of things about KCC, and I'm not going to be awkward, there's all these questions at KCC, which we all would need answers on. If I could have them in black and white, I'd take them to KCC, so I expect to get some answers. So at the moment, I'm not getting very many answers. That be done?
Are you okay to?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that done.
I've asked for, sometimes I've asked for these cases, the officers come here and parish council meetings, but they don't want to come out at night. And we don't have a joint transport meeting as well, so to, anyway, if I can have some inviting, and I'll send it to KCC, so you get a reply.
So I, I think what we'll do is, I'll ask, so Dean, Rebecca, also the Chair and the Town Clerk, to pull together everything that has come up, not just in this meeting, but because I'm conscious that for council, there were a number of issues that were relating to KCC, so that you have got a complete list. Obviously Romley Gardens, I'm not sure, I thought the Viaduct was one as well, but that might be, that would need to check with Maxine, I think, so we'll do that.
Sorry, Chair, to come up and button in all the time, thank you, pardon. But we do have another Kent County councillor in Ramsgate, councillor Constantine, and I think that, that we should, that she should be notified as well.
Absolutely.
So obviously, two is better than one.
Copy her in. So whatever we send you, we'll copy councillor Constantine.
And I'll, I'll endeavour to get you the quickest answer or some response, which at the moment is very lacking. I mean, I come here the other night.
That would be, that would be really useful.
I mean, it, their own is, is on them then, because at the moment, I'm, I'm, I'm taking all the flak from officers that don't turn up.
I mean, I, I mean, I know at TDC we have a difficulty of, of KCC officers attending meetings we would like them to attend, so it's just, not just here. Other, councillor Green?
Could I just ask how the remit is, the extent of the remit is changing?
I.
Are you adding to it?
I discussed it, I discussed it with the town clerk, what I was proposing, and it, my understanding is that it was okay to extend it in the way that I was suggesting from the original strategy group as it was running. From the original, um, Strategy Group as it was running, um, and obviously for approval through this committee. So, uh, because I was very, I, I asked a question. I was very conscious that we began the Strategy Group in the first place through a motion that, that councillor Huxley, Huxley and I took to full council. Um, so I, I was asking those questions and, um, my understanding from my conversation with the town clerk.
Are you taking on extra?
No, there is, there is, no, I mean, the Strategy Group never had a budget anyway. Um, and if there is anything that comes out of it, it come, effectively it comes out of the beautification budget, so it's all within whatever is within the beautification budget.
Because I think we're taking on another technician.
Yes, I believe so. You would know more about that. I'm not involved in that, but yes, councillor.
I, I can confirm that's the case. I discussed that with town clerk on Tuesday. And we both agreed that we will go ahead and advertise. For the next ten technicians in the process.
So if, if I just go back to the. So if I'm just going back to the terms of reference for, for this, um, this proposed working group is. So the overall aim is to enhance environmental aesthetics of Ramsgate for the benefit of residents, visitors and businesses. That's what the, the technicians were already doing. Um, so there is nothing different there. Um, the audit, audit of the green open spaces and, uh, maintaining those spaces. Uh, we've only really changed that to under licence from service level agreement, um, and also, uh, reference the Palms. So again. That is exactly carried forward from what was there before. Um, and. A part of the role of the working group is to support the Ramsgate Town Council technicians in promoting the maintenance of the town centre and outlying wards. Um, and to, the third part is again a straight carry forward from the Strategy Group. Which was to continue to liaise with the existing volunteer groups. So. All it really does is, is it takes the, the, um, the Strategy Group. But it enables us to actually have those discussions with technicians about what their pressures are and what their work is. Um, so that actually we can bring it back into the Town Promotion Committee and the council to try and. I, I mean, I don't know about other councillors, but I've struggled to sometimes really understand. Where, I mean, our technicians do so much, um, but to understand just how much of that actually is part of town promotion or. Other roles within the council. Because I, I, my concern is that too often we go, oh, we'll get the technicians to do that and actually. We need better, I think I as a councillor, need a better understanding sometimes of, of where their pressures. Do you know what, actually, I think councillor Orban, I would quite enjoy that. I think Maxine would exhaust me, um, because she is so physically fit and does so much. I'm not sure I could keep up with her, but I'm, I'm up for trying. Um, yes, I, she's, she's just amazing and, and does so much. Um, so I might take you up on that challenge. Um, and again, it says that item on back here, budget, it, in all costs are covered. In fact, I shouldn't say initial, the word initial shouldn't be on there. Because that was the wording from the, um, Strategy Group. So it, costs are covered through the existing staff time budgets and resources, so I just wanted to. Um, so can I have any proposer to accept the terms and conditions, councillor Orban and any seconders, councillor Ara? And all other members of the Prom, Town Promotion Committee in agreement?
Agreed.
Thank you. Um, in that case, uh, the date and time of the next meeting.
Chair.
Oh.
To go through the Chair, Vice Chair membership.
Oh, yes, sorry, my apologies. Thank you for having someone who's alert and awake next to me. Um. Right, one minute. So the membership of the Town Enhancement Working Group is, so we've done the first bit. Um, is everyone okay if I chair it again? Yep, and, uh, at the moment, um, councillor Huxley was Vice Chair of the Strategy Group. Um, I haven't asked her on this one, but I think she's willing to do it again. Um, so. So we, we, we just got her. And I think, what did we do? We, did we say, um. Three members again? Yeah, so anyone else? Um, councillor Ara, that's great. And, and the dates, and again, the dates of the, um, Town Enhancement Working Group are twice a year. Um, and that's partly because I really do not want to take the technicians off of their work to attend meetings. Um, and, uh, this is really about the season, so are we, are we okay with that? Everyone agreed? Thank you. In which case I will go on to item nine and say the date and time of the next meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Is Wednesday, the fourth of September at seven PM. Thank you very much.